Good evening, everyone. We would like to welcome you to the Ogden City Council Work Session for March 6, 2012. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Wicks, who should be joining us shortly. And this work session is to provide background information about the utility rate study and receive public input and to discuss the revenue sufficiency for sewer and stormwater utilities in council business. So I think we're going to start off with background information. Okay, Mr. Simms.
What we'd like to do tonight is present some background information on the utility rate study and then gather some additional public input for the study and for the process itself. We're going to have a couple of different presentations tonight, hopefully to provide some background and some context for the rate study. The first presentation is going to be by me. I will go over some of the policy considerations that were identified at the beginning of this rate study process, just as a refresher. After my comments on those policy considerations, we'll have a presentation by administration. And this is going to be about the projects that have been completed since the last rate study in 2007. And this presentation will also cover some information or some projects that we're anticipating as we go forward over the next few years. After that presentation, we'll have a short presentation by Cody Dieter. He is with our consulting firm, Lewis Young Robertson in Burningham. And he'll be going over some of the guiding financial principles for the rate study. So he'll talk about and explain issues like revenue sufficiency, bond coverage ratios, cash reserves, why those things would be important, and some of the other financial principles that the council needs to take into consideration. After Cody's presentation, I will get back up and I'll talk about some of the results of the online survey that we have conducted over the last couple of months and then go over the timeline and the schedule for the rest of the study. After those comments of mine, we will have public input. And after that public input, we will move to, well, we'll take a break and we'll move to room 310, just in the middle of the floor here. We'll talk about the revenue sufficiency issues with the water and the stormwater utilities. So anybody who wants to stick around for that, we will be moving to the other room after that. So, to talk about the policy considerations that were identified at the beginning of the rate study process, what I've done here is I've broken these out into a couple of different sections or parts, mostly corresponding with the timeline and how they flow and when you would need to take these things into consideration. So the first one that's up on the screen here, the Part One, that has to do with the financial policy considerations. And included with that, the first one showing is revenue sufficiency, or we could say insuring fiscally sound planning into the future. This includes a couple of different parts within that one policy consideration. This has to do with understanding what our growth patterns are going to be and understanding what our growth forecast is going to be for the next five to 10 years, understanding what our operations and maintenance needs are going to be for that period of time, looking at the capital needs. This includes looking at the CIP and the master plans that have been presented or proposed, considerations for coverage ratios for both our current bonding and any future bonding, if that's the case, and then establishing appropriate cash reserves according to standards that Cody will talk about in a few minutes. The second policy consideration, the second policy that was identified, was completing a financial review. And this includes an in-depth review of the CAFER, the Consolidated Annual Financial Report, and the financial audit. Continuing on with the Part One policy considerations, the third policy is reviewing, as I mentioned, the Capital Improvement Plan and the water and the stormwater master plans. These plans need to be reviewed and coordinated so all the projects match in all three of the plans. This will give you a chance, as a council, to prioritize those projects and place those where you think the funding should be or where you think the funding options might come from, based on that priority. A fourth policy that was identified at the beginning of this process was looking at expanding the secondary water system. And this is something where we would need to do, at the very least, a preliminary analysis to understand costs associated with this, what kind of impact that would have on all these other revenue sufficiency issues and rates and all of those things. So that's something that we're going through now. Once you take all of these things into consideration, you come up with the appropriate level of service. So this includes all of the financial information and the projects that you've identified that need to be completed in that period of time. So those are the Part One, the financial considerations. Part Two comes in after we really have a good understanding of that level of service and these revenue sufficiency issues and the financial issues. And these are considerations that have to do with the actual rate structure itself. So this includes, number one, probably the most prominent of all the issues, and that's creating appropriate rates for customers, both with and without secondary water service. A second policy consideration is looking at any conservation initiatives, conservation rates, if the council wants to do something with those. A third is creating the appropriate base rates and the cost per unit. In our case, the way our rate structure is set up right now, the cost is a rate per thousand gallons. A fourth consideration would be applying the actual usage data. This is the information that we have from the newer billing software and the research that's been done to understand the actual usage trends. And we can apply those to the rate structure to understand where some of the breaks may come from or where some of the different rates may break if we want to do an additional tier structure, as is the case now. A fifth policy consideration that was identified is tying water and sewer rates together. This, too, is where we would look at considerations for lot size and billing, discounts for certain users would be in this section, considering changes to landscape and watering requirements. A lot of comments from the survey, as we'll go over later, had to do with this issue. An additional is simplifying the rate structure. And then a last one is developing a more informative customer billing statement. And this was something that was identified as something that needed to be done so people could have a better idea of their actual usage trends, how much they're using, and if they choose to conserve or do something different, they get a better idea of how much water they're actually using. So we want a more informative customer billing statement. Part Three, these aren't necessarily connected to a timeline, but they're programs that have been proposed and talked about that would have an impact ultimately on a customer's utility bill. And so they're not directly tied to the rate study, but they're something that needs to be looked at in light of the rate study because it would have that impact if these were approved as they're proposed. And there's still much discussion about those, but those are a couple of programs that need to be looked at in light of the study. So that's just a quick summary of the policies that have been identified for the rate study itself. We've got one last slide that's sort of a graphic illustration of where we are and how all this fits together. So you can see up the top, we've got the CAFER. That's the financial data. That informs the rate study. All three of those plans, the Water Master Plan, the CIP, and the Stormwater Master Plan, the two master plans will inform the CIP, all three of those will inform the rate study itself. The CIP will be incorporated into the budget as we get into that in a couple of months. So once we have that rate study, then we can move into the rates ordinance itself. And again, that's sort of that Part Two of the policy considerations. And then that rates ordinance, once approved, would be incorporated into the budget. And then accounted for in the budget would be any potential future loans or bonds that may take place. So with that, I'd like to invite Jay Louder and Justin Anderson up to give their presentation about the projects that have been completed since 2007 and, again, to talk about projects that we're anticipating in the future. Jay is the Public Services Director for the city and Justin is the city engineer.
Chair Garner, members of council, Mr. Johnson. While Justin's here to present the projects that we've completed with our current bond project, before he does that, there's just a couple of things I'd like to add. I'd like to add that when we did the original rate study in 2007, we were faced with many infrastructure needs. At that time, we were going to address high-priority projects with the bond, knowing full well that the projects, there would be projects that could not be addressed at that time due to overall cost. As such, projects that dealt with the filter plant, Ogden City Canyon Water Line's well fill development would have to be reviewed at a later date. There was an understanding that these issues, as well as other distribution issues, would have to be looked at towards the end of our original study, which brings us to where we are today. Upon completion of the Water Master Plan, we can now identify those additional projects and the costs associated with them. This information will give us actual costs as we readdress where we are with current and future rate structures. I'd also like to add that with our current bond projects, as Justin will go through it with you, due to good management and even more so due to poor economy, we were able to stretch our money a lot longer during that construction period because of the economy. So we've got a really good boom for our bucks with the project. So with that, Justin, you want to go over?
Thank you, Jay. Chair Garner, members of the council, and CAO Johnson, thank you for this opportunity to quickly go over the capital improvement needs to move forward in the future for Ogden City Water and Sewer. Before we get into the exact type of needs, I wanted to quickly recap what we've done in the last Water and Sewer Bond Project. With the sanitary sewer improvements, these projects looked to address capacity issues, infiltration issues, also manholes that were aged, that were deteriorating, and, you know, with all these projects, it was generally due to just needing to be upgraded, just due to a lot of old age and, like I said, infiltration projects. So the sewer lines installed was essentially 4,300 lineal feet. The small lines that were repaired, replaced, were 3,900 feet. We replaced 156 manholes, rehabilitated them. In the large slip lining project, this was the one over on Wall Avenue, that was about 8,000 feet. And with the small slip lining, these are generally pipes that are between six to 12 inches, it was over 23,000 lineal feet.
Could you explain the slip?
Slip lining is a trenchless technology. Lot of times, the old way of doing it, you know, years ago, was to have to dig up and replace the line. Slip lining allows us to dig down an open trench in one spot and actually pull a liner through the pipe. We clean it, pull the liner through, expand it out, and then we have an exit pit that it goes to. So really, there's only an entry pit and an exit pit. We don't have to open cut the whole length.
And what is the expected lifespan of that product?
60 years is generally, it's the same span as a regular pipe. With slip lining, the host pipe is needing to be in a certain condition, that it holds some structural ability to it. But the idea is to get and just do the slip lining before the structural stability is Again, here's just a kind of a quick look of the projects. Again, on the bottom right is kind of the slip lining process. The top left is, this was the sewer we replaced on 23rd Street. This was a capacity issue, so we needed to upsize the line. And on storm sewer improvements with the bond, we had a major project, a large Amber project, on the Echols Storm Drain Line that was replaced. We did some projects on Ridge Dell, also on Mill Creek Storm Sewer. We also did an update with FEMA on the Stormwater Management Plan with the Lomas, and these are letter of map revisions or amendments with FEMA. And we also diverted money to the Ogden River Restoration.
Can you explain that? That when you say divert money to the restoration, could you explain that?
Yes. Originally, this project wasn't included with the bonds, but due to the inability to address the cost of other projects in the plan, and typically, this was the Harrison Boulevard Line, there wasn't enough money to cover the complete cost of that. And so the funding was used to go towards a different project that wasn't included at that time, and that was the Ogden River Restoration Project.
Why is that important for us, the Ogden River?
Well, it's really, you know, goes through our city and a lot of stormwater gets dumped into the Ogden River. It's a conduit that carries this. And to meet future EPA mandates and also current mandates, we were going down the road of having to put a TMDL on the Ogden River. There's currently one upstream or proposed at Pineview Reservoir, so to keep those requirements coming on the Ogden River, which requires funding, I mean, when the EPA and the state demands a TMDL...
What's a TMDL?
Total daily, or total mass load daily. So it's the total amount of nutrients that you can put into a body of water. The Jordan River has one. And so that requires that you can only divert so many nutrients loading into a body of water. It's limited on, so you need to pretreat your water, essentially.
My question was, because I didn't want people to think that we're out there planting trees with their sewer money. And I think it's important that they understand what that has to do with EPA standards that are now higher than what they were 50, 60 years ago. And so therefore, the public would understand why that was necessary.
Yes. And in fact, in a slide later on, we talk about the need of the MS4 permit and following our stormwater management plan. And that's what is, you know, the EPA and the state are going more towards, to make sure our stormwater isn't polluting our rivers, isn't polluting the Great Salt Lake, so that we can use it, we can have it as an amenity in the city and not just a...
A sewer pipe.
Sewer pipe, yeah.
Okay.
So what amount of money from the bond was put into the river restoration?
About $1 million. Again, here's just some manhole replacements for storm sewer. And that's what that looks like. Now, the majority of the bond funds were spent on water utility improvements. These improvements were to mainly look at deficiencies in storage and main transmission lines and also to upgrade some pressure-reducing valve stations, which take the pressure from one area, one zone, pressure zone, and allow the water to be at the right pressure to feed residential homes in another zone. So it drops the pressure between the zones. So again, W094, these were more waterline replacements, and you can see on the list there's quite a few projects there.
Justin, as you go through, you know, like where you see STPP and stuff, just say what those are as you go through the rest of this for us.
Okay. You bet. You can see that there's water main replacements on Washington Boulevard, 12th Street, and Grand Avenue. We also had water main replacements on Madison and Jefferson in the north part of the city. We also had on 7th Street, due to the STIP project that was performed, there was recently an upgrade on surface improvements in that section of road. We also, those surface improvements didn't repair or replace the water line there, so we had to upgrade the water line as well. We didn't want to put a new road down and have a water line break and ruin the new road. So that's what, it's a state transportation, surface improvements is what that stands for. But we also had some canyon waterline fittings. We also did upgrades on Harrisville Road around North Street and also down Down Street. We had some modeling in the southeast area and also some projects in the southeast area, just east of the college. North Harrison, Upper Capitol Street, east of Harrison, had a couple of different phases. We did Maryland and also Madison and Jefferson South. We did improvements out in West Industrial Park, they were in great need, also at the airport. And we also did, looked at the study on the Ogden Canyon Transmission Line. Again, here's some other water projects. We developed the well in Taylor Canyon and added a tank up there. We did a storage tank up north of 4 and 1 million above 9th Street. We're doing improvements on the 23rd Street Reservoir. We did a 36th Street 5 million gallon water tank. We also did some transmission lines out of the canyon up to the tanks on 9th Street. We also did the 46th Street Transmission Line. We did a transmission line down Buchanan. We also looked at some metering devices in Ogden Canyon and updated them so we could transfer our water to Pineview Reservoir.
Can you talk a little bit more about the transmission lines and why that was important for us?
Yes.
Why that is very important?
The transmission lines, and it's essentially one of the main reasons why we had the water bond done, is the transmission lines is to convey water from point A to point B. Distribution lines are to deliver the water to the residents. And the transmission lines are usually under greater pressures because they're having to pump the water to certain tanks. And so if we lose those transmission lines, we put large areas of the city out of water.
Really at risk.
Mm-hmm. So it's much easier to replace those lines while the other line is still working. And that's the case for every water line. However, we're at a lot greater risk than just a block being out of water than, you know, square miles of the city being out of water.
Can you review why it was necessary for us to establish those water tanks on 46th Street and, I guess, the 4 million gallon tank also?
Yeah. There was a transmission line that was replaced up 46th Street. The 36th Street had a 5 million gallon tank placed at it, and we also did a tank at 9th Street, where it was a 4 and 1 million. A few years ago, the canyon water line broke open and there was not enough storage in the north end to provide to the city. And so there was a large area in the north part of the city that was without water. These storage reservoirs provide not only the water that people use, but there's emergency storage and also fire flow storage to these tanks. So that's what they're for.
So the one on 9th Street, if that happened again, we would still have enough water to supply to the north end of the city?
Yes. We would have water to supply to the north end, for a time. I mean, we'd need to get it repaired quickly, but yes, it wouldn't be you're out of water for three days. We should have enough water, you know, especially to, if people know that there's a problem and that they ration their water a little bit, they still should be able to flush toilets and take some showers.
And what about fire suppression?
Fire suppression is something that's required by the state. Every water utility has to have fire suppression. And so we meet state and local standards in being able to deliver water for a fire.
But did we do that previous to all this construction? Were we able to do that?
Not everywhere, no.
That's what I, yeah.
Yeah. We were deficient in areas. And 9th Street, because we couldn't get water there, you know, storage-wise, we also were without fire suppression there, you know, when we needed it.
There were issues there, too, I remember.
Here's just some pictures of some of the projects. There's a 5 million gallon tank at the top left. The bottom middle is the 4 million gallon tank at 9th Street. And the top right is the 23rd Street Reservoir. Again, here's just some distribution lines that are being redone. You can see that there's traffic control issues, there's utilities we have to deal with in conflicts and get the pipe in the ground. And here's just some other pictures. The top left, we're doing a bore. On the bottom left, you can see some of the utilities we have to deal with. The middle and the ones on the right, and the top right, is we actually moved the water line underneath the sidewalk, got it out of the roadway because it was on a UDOT road. So the bottom right is just one we're doing just off the curb and gutter in the roadway. But it becomes difficult to residents, they have to reroute traffic and, you know, it's dusty and at times, it's inconvenient to get in their homes. And just in summary, our new storage facility's added about 10 million gallons of water. We had three new additional booster stations. Our water mains constructed are around 90,000 lineal feet. Our water production that was restored, this was due to the well fill, up at Pineview, was about 5,000 gallons a minute, or, excuse me, was 13,000 gallons per minute. So we also restored some, about 5,000 gallons per minute as well. The total cost for the water improvements was a little over $40 million. Bond funds remaining, we have $763,000. The water system improvements, you can see up there, the majority of the projects that we did were 12-inch lines and greater. You know, there were some that were done that was 10-inch and smaller, but the majority of the system that we improved was 12-inch and greater. Because that's the size of our transmission lines. Again, here is a chart of what we have in our system as far as pipe diameter and pipe age. You can see, if you look at the diameter, that about 20% of our system, thereabouts, is 12 inches and greater. The majority of our system is 10 inches and smaller. The state standard for distribution lines now is eight inches. So that's what they like to see, every distribution pipe be is eight inches. As you can see, we have some that are two inches distributing water. Also, the age of our pipes, you can see, a lot of pipe was installed in the 50s and 60s for Ogden City. You know, about 40% in those 20 years.
That iron pipe, is that what typically most of it is, or?
The older pipe was typically steel, and then it transitioned, you know, to steel. And there was different variations of steel, but it transferred to a cast iron, and then from there, it's gone to a ductile and PVC, like a C900.
Do you have a breakdown of how much of what kind there is?
Actually, we do have, I do have that information. I don't have it with me right now, but I can look that up and give that to you.
Seems to me, the impression I've got is that before this last great improvement with our system, the improvements in the city had been maybe 30 or 40 years before this last improvement. Is that correct on that there?
Yeah. I mean, they went a great long time without a lot of upgrades. And typically, and that's one of the things I wanted to point out coming up here, is it's good to get on a schedule and to have a routine schedule of replacing pipes. And the reason to do that is so you don't get, like in the 50s and 60s, when all that pipe starts failing, that's a lot of pipe to replace at once. And so the idea is to get in a schedule of every year of replacing so much so that you don't get breaks that cause a lot of problems.
Justin, on this graph that you're showing currently, probably about, if I'm looking at the numbers correctly, about 51% of our pipe is over 50 years old.
Correct.
And you're saying the average lifespan of that pipe is probably 50 to 60 years?
Typically. Typically, most of these pipes should last 40 years. Then, once they reach 40 years, they start going through failure. And will they all fail at 40 years? No. Typically, from 40 to about 100 years, depending about, you know, what material the pipe is, you know, the older steel pipe doesn't last as long as the cast iron. The cast iron doesn't quite perform as well as the ductile iron and PVC. But yes, we start experiencing failures at around 40 to 50 years in these pipes. And just to give you an example, the pipeline coming down the canyon that we're having, had the big break and put people out of water, that was put in the ground... had the big break and put people out of water, that was put in the ground in 1914. So it was about 100 years ago. So...
Thank you.
Again, here's, the culinary water project needs that we need going forward. They need to address the age of our pipes. You know, we need to get a scheduled replacement program in place. And with that, it can address distribution, fire flow, and pressure deficiencies as we replace that pipe. Also, we need to include as part of that is our pressure-reducing valve in our stations there, and also our Pineview Well Field. That Pineview Well Field, it is a great producer of water and has for a long time. However, it is aging. We went through and upgraded it. We got it working and functioning at a higher level again, but the wells are drilled different nowadays. You know, it was probably old cable tools, how they drilled those wells. And it's going to need to be replaced in the future. Not tomorrow, but just something to plan for the future. We also have a treatment plant that's aging. Do, you know, the question is, is do we replace that treatment plant? Or do we obtain culinary water from Weber Basin to replace what that produced? Also, we need to address the canyon water line. And currently, we are looking at addressing that. We're putting plans in place to deal with that. And also, we need to install new wells in or within close proximity of the city limits for the future growth of the city. So, and we're currently looking at where that would be possible. Also, we need to set up and follow, and you know, with some areas, we have set up maintenance schedules, but in other areas, we need to set up and also follow the maintenance schedules. And what I mean by that is not necessarily replacing pipe, but having a schedule in place to flush lines out on a regular basis, to turn our valves, you know, exercise our valves to make sure that they're functioning properly and things of that nature. Make sure our pumps that are well-filled and our booster stations are getting routine maintenance. So... Here's, here's some pictures. This was up on 46th Street of a pipeline break. You can see, when these happen, we not only have to repair the pipe, but they can cause a lot of damage. The, in the top left, you can see that crack going down the road. And I'll show you a picture on the next slide of how much that has raised. But that went down the road probably about 125 yards. And so not only do we have, you know, road problems and curb and gutter problems right here, but we have to go back and we have to fix and repair all that. So it becomes very expensive if we have to continually be repairing issues from waterline breaks. Again, you can, you can see in the bottom there just how much it raised up right through there. Also, this was on 12th and Harrison, that old Hollywood video there. This happened in the wintertime. We had one blow up. And you can see, it not only causes damage in the roadways, but it can cause damage to adjacent properties as well. Looks pretty, all nice and white, but it really is not very good for the businesses and homeowners. Again, this is a, this is a cast iron pipe. In there is what's called a tuberoid. And what that is, is iron, manganese, and calcium. And what that forms up due to maintenance issues with cast iron lines. This is probably on a line that was a long dead-end line, so it didn't get flushed a lot. And so these start forming up and they get very hard. And once they get so hard, they're hard, you can't flush them out. So then that limits our capacity in a fire flow. You know, we think we should have more flow down this line than what we actually do. So you see the pipe, though, is in pretty good condition, but the inside has problems. This is some pictures up at the water filter plant. You can see here on the inside wall is the bottom, bottom two pictures, that the wall and the brick is pushed out. I went outside and got pictures. You can see where they've had issues with the mortar and grout coming out. And so it's had to be filled with some spray and foam. Again, you know, one thing about concrete is all concrete will crack. And that's not a deficiency to see a crack in concrete. However, when gaps start forming in concrete, that's concerning. And you can see some of these pictures in here with gaps forming in the concrete. Also, the seepage through some of the walls up there is, again, shows a deficiency in the structural integrity. Again, here's just some more pictures up at the filter plant. Now, the storm sewer project needs. We need to look and address capacity deficiencies with stormwater. We also need to perform a condition assessment and address known problems that we have there. We need to meet all of our MS4 permit requirements. And what MS4 is, is it's called a municipal separate storm sewer permit. We have to have one of those for the state to be able to discharge stormwater into rivers or in, like the Weber or Ogden, or even into any body of water to discharge. We have to have this permit in place. We have to meet certain requirements with that. We also have to work towards meeting our stormwater pretreatment mandates. Those that we have now and those that we'll have in the future. And we also have to obtain maintenance agreements with canal companies to be able to discharge into them as well. Again, here's, here's a picture of, this is Second Street in between, just from Wall Avenue West. You can see, this pipe actually looks in pretty good condition right here, until you realize it looks more oval than round. This should be a round pipe. And so you can see where, due to the load on top of it, it's causing some problems. And again, in there, you can see where these problems are happening. This pipe is starting to fail. And so these are some issues that will need to be addressed.
What's the solution for that? Is it a complete replacement or?
Is it slip lining or?
Depending on how bad the problems are on top, it might need to be a complete replacement. Typically, slip lining, you expect the host pipe to be able to have some sort of structural integrity.
So what has caused that? Pressure or?
There's, there's a lot of heavy, yeah, a lot of heavy trucks driving on Second Street. And so really, it was probably at that time with the cost requirements put on the project, they probably had to go with a cheaper alternative pipe. However, sometimes cheaper isn't always better. And in this case, you know, you can see that CMP starting to fail. You know, if they would have had, and I don't know how much at the time this was cost to install, but if they would have looked to do like a concrete pipe, you wouldn't be seeing these type of issues.
What's the size of that pipe? Is that a 12?
Uh, it's, I'm gonna say it's 48 inch, so about four feet, 40 inch, somewhere right around there. You see, that guy's probably about six feet tall, so... Again, here's just, and I don't, I still don't know how this happened. Just a hole got punched in the pipe, I think probably from a loading issue. And there must have been a rock or something that pushed against it and it just popped it. Sanitary sewer project needs. Again, these, a lot of these are similar to the same needs we have with our storm drain. The, we need to determine and address, and address capacity deficiencies. We need an updated master plan. We need to perform condition assessments and address, again, known problems. We need to reduce and limit infiltration into our pipes. And I don't know if we can completely eliminate infiltration into our pipes, but we need to reduce it as much as possible because we get charged for that as it goes down to the treatment plant. And we also need to utilize trenchless technologies. And I've got, I'm ending on a picture that I'll talk about why that's important. But we also need to clean and maintain our lines before we get calcium buildup in our sewer lines. Because once we get calcium buildup hard, we can't utilize trenchless technologies. We've got to open cut to replace it. And sometimes that can be difficult. Again, here in the, in the top left, we had a sewer fell. We had to dig that up. And again, you know, when you fix sewer, you can't shut off sewers, unfortunately, like you can water lines. And so, you know, we really try to address those problems before we have complete failures. But in the picture on the right, you can see a manhole right there and you can see some shoring setup. And you can see two houses in the background. When this line was initially installed, it was installed 16 feet deep, and I'm sure those two homes were not there. So the question is, is if we had to open cut and replace this line, it would almost be virtually impossible to do that in between those two homes. So we utilized trenchless technology. So we get a receiving pit on one side. And this actually, we did what was called pipe bursting. We actually pulled, they call it a pig head. And really, what that is, is it's a cutter and expander on a cable. You pull it through and it slices up the old pipe material and you pull new pipe material right behind it. And so it just goes right in its place. And the picture on the left is where there's kind of the receiving pit was. You can't really see it too well because of the track hoe and some of the equipment, but, so you just pull it right through and so you have an entry pit and a receiving pit. But it allows us to go in and to do this type of work. So... That's all the pictures I have for you.
Is that comparing cost, though, to not have to dig a trench? You just bore it out? Is that, is that more expensive? Is it less expensive?
No, it's less expensive and it's about less expensive due to the replacement costs, the surface improvements that you have to do. I mean, there is a cost to getting the equipment here and the shoring is a little different and so it costs more. But other than that, you know, the pipe material costs are about the same. So it saves you all the replace components.
Justin, you mentioned that there are some bond funds remaining. Do you, can you kind of explain what the plan is for those?
Yes, we do have, some projects are ongoing still, like at the 23rd Street Reservoir, the improvements up there. We also have some other water lines that we're working on. And so we're looking to expend those funds. We have some, a little, not a lot in storm drain, but a little bit. And we also have, we've had quite a bit of savings in our sewer. We've even exceeded what we have proposed to do originally with the bond. So we did additional projects to that and there's still a fair amount of sewer funds left. So we need to look at readdressing with the council, future projects on that million dollars.
Is there, is there sort of a deadline to kind of complete all that work?
Well, we met the deadline we had to have as far as, you know, the, I think it was 15% or so. I think Laura could answer, answer what that was. The, what we had to have expended by June of last year.
I think it was 85%.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had 85% expended. And so we met that. And so we're still working on some projects. On the sewer, we do have one project that's going to be happening on 36th Street, you know, east of Harrison, right there. There are some problems, but we're going to be doing some pipe bursting and some open cut trenching because of a few capacity issues. So we do have projects coming down to expend that money, but some of those projects won't have it all expended.
I guess it's a final question on that. Is there a final deadline that all that money has to be expended under the bond?
I'm working fervently to spend that money, but I want to do it in a way that's going to be best for the city. So we were coming to a point of, you know, it's... Yeah, in answer to your question, yes, I'm trying, us as an administration, we're trying to expend that money and also utilize all of it to its maximum abilities. We just don't want to run into something and not have it planned out correctly because a lot of these projects, you know, we just don't go out and do this. We have, you know, we have to plan ahead. We have to get permits. We have to get plans and designs done. We have to get projects bid out. And so that takes a fair amount of time and planning. So we are looking toward doing that with all the money.
In regards to Councilman Gockner's question, though, the only firm deadline, I think, was that 85% had to be met.
Correct.
And then the remaining 15%, we still want to use it, but there's not a firm...
Yes, we still need to expend it on projects and then that's what we're working towards.
Oh, one more question on that. Does the, sort of the, the time it takes us to spend this bond money impact a future bond?
I would probably...
No, it doesn't. I don't think it will at all.
I'm not a bond. I'm better at putting things in the ground than I am worrying about bonds.
Here comes the bond master.
And you do not want me putting things in the ground. It was an accomplishment for me today to put batteries in my doorbell. The, so the question, the, you have to have the reasonable expectation that you will spend 100% of your bond proceeds within three years. So you have not met that requirement. The, what the city needs to do, and so it's not like they're going to come, you know, big hammer and beat you up or anything. What the city needs to do is make sure that they document why. So our reasonable expectation, when we close on the bond, that we would spend this this way. The reason it didn't happen that way, I mean, from what I know, is that you were able to get a little bit more bang for your buck. And so those other projects hadn't been planned for. So that slowed it down. So another example would be, a number of years ago, it was, you know, I almost want to get out the paper bag and breathe in my, you did what? St. George City borrowed a bunch of money to do a road. And they ran into desert tortoise issues and could not build the road. Well, I was living in, I guess, my finance la-la land or something because, I mean, it was like two years and 10 months into, you know, after the bond and they call and they hadn't spent any money. And I was like, what's the reason? Well, as long as they, I mean, so they, you know, in their file, they had to, you know, note the litigation that ensued and, you know, all the reasons why they thought they could spend that money when we issued the bonds and then they weren't able to and they eventually did. But it was a lot slower. So as long as that is documented and it was reasonable when we issued the bonds, then there's not a problem.
So not a problem. And I mean, I know there are lots of good reasons why we haven't used it all, but it doesn't impact the next bond that the city pursues.
And the reason for the documentation is just like, you know, any citizen or business can be audited. The IRS can audit tax exempt bonds. And their objectives are to make sure you issue the least amount tax exempt as rational because every tax exempt bond that's out there is meaning that someone is not paying income tax on a taxable investment. So if you went out and just willy-nilly issued, you know, $50 million of bonds and just sat on the money for years, and there was a point in time when cities were sort of motivated to do that because you could earn more on those idle funds than you, than it costs to borrow them. Well, that's not the case. But their whole, you know, one of their goals is to make sure you're not doing that just to sort of, you know, make money off of the interest. But the other thing is to make sure that there's not more tax exempt bonds out there that are actually, you know, doing something, putting infrastructure in the ground is what they want to make sure. So they could come in and do an audit and say, well, you should have spent this money down in, you know, three years and it took you three and a half or four. As long as you've got documentation in your file, everything will be fine.
And I think every bonding company in the world knows that right now you're getting a great deal.
Oh, without question.
On every project you do. So I, I don't think we would be questioned. It won't be a hard sell.
And it's, you know, not very rarely, I mean, as with individuals. It's, or it's rare that, you know, those are audited. They're done and they're done randomly. But, you know, I'm only aware of, you know, less than a handful in my 23 years in this business that have been audited in Utah.
And it's my, it's my understanding that the ordinance is being drafted in order to reappropriate the funds to the other projects. So it'll be here to the council very soon. That's the expectation.
That's correct.
I think the benefit of it is that we were able to accomplish more for the money. As I recall, when we were considering the bond, that we had a list of projects that were needed to be completed and some projects that needed to be done. And we're able to do that, but because of the ability to buy product at a lower rate and the cost of it, it enabled us to go ahead and do other projects that we would, that have been completed and benefited the system. So I think that's the benefit.
Yes, it was about 20, about 20%. And so all of the projects that were initially outlined on the bond, as we move forward, have relatively been completed. It's newer projects that are still outstanding. Thank you.
And Cody, as we're getting ready, I'm sorry I don't recall your last name, but if you could introduce, Dieter.
Yes, Cody Dieter.
If you'd just let the audience know where you're from and...
Sure. I represent Lewis Young Robertson in Burningham. I work for Laura. Sure. I represent Lewis Young Robertson in Burningham. I work for Laura, who was just here. And we are hired to perform the utility rates study that we're currently looking at your implementing rates, what's the impact of all of these decisions that you need with master plans and CIPs, how's that going to implement, impact your rates? So, the purpose of my discussion is to provide a little more color on the brief description that Glenn provided earlier, in terms of what is the purpose of a utility rate study, what are the key elements of a rate study, and then what are some of the key policy? He talked about a few of the key policy discussion points, and we're going to just provide a little bit more detail and color on what those represent, what those definitions are. And we provided a handout. You may have it in your packet, and it was provided to the public at the door. That summarizes the information that I'll present. My intent is to be brief, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions to make sure that these items are fully fleshed out, and so that they're understood. And I know finance is an exciting topic, but I'll, we'll keep it brief, so you don't fall asleep.
It's according to this, or this?
Are there some of those back there, Amy Sue? Are there some of these back there?
These?
Yep, I'll get them.
And everything that's on this sheet will be on the PowerPoint, so you won't miss anything while she's gathering for those for you. The three main elements when we perform a utility rate study are, first of all, to ensure revenue sufficiency, or to say it in another way, to ensure that you have, that you have a fiscally sound planning into the future, that your system remains viable, your utility systems remain viable. And that all comes down, well, at least one component of that, and a crucial component is what are the financial impacts to consider in your system. You have to have certain revenue to make sure that you're meeting all of your obligations. You have both fixed and variable costs associated with providing those utility services, and they have to be met. If people are using water, there are certain costs that trickle back up. So, what we, the first step in the planning process is to ensure revenue sufficiency. So, we develop a five to 10-year forecast of what growth may look like in the future. What are your operation and maintenance costs now and into the future? What have they been in the past? What capital projects do you need to put in? Both for repairing and replacing old pieces of infrastructure, and also, are there any new pieces of infrastructure needed for growth-related projects? Also, we talk about debt planning, if that's necessary. If you have future capital needs, can you pay for those with cash? Do you need to issue debt, or will be a combination of both? So, that's really the purpose of step one, is how much revenue do we need to make our system viable? Then the second step is to talk about equity among the different user classes, to make sure that everyone pays their fair share. So, a residential connection is different than a commercial connection, and a one-inch connection is different than a six-inch connection. And so, we do an analysis to make sure that everyone on the system who uses water pays their fair share, both in terms of what they use, and what fixed costs are in the system, such as storage, storage for use, storage for fire flow, distribution, both for use and for potential fire flow. And the third component is to encourage or to foster conservation. How do you structure a rate so that there is some encouragement to conserve water? And that is a very much a policy decision by the council of the level of that conservation initiative. Is it going to be extremely punitive, or is it going to be more on the other end, where it's, we do encourage you to conserve, or are we going to hammer you, make sure you conserve? That's a policy decision for you, but we provide some framework upon which you can make that decision. So, those are the three main components when we look at a utility rate study. So, here are a few key definitions, some of the keys to having a quality utility system. The first is a master plan. As Laura said before, we're not good at putting stuff in the ground, or planning for things that are going to go in the ground. But engineers are. Justin and the outside consulting engineering firms, that's what they are good at doing, is making plans. What do we need to make sure that our system remains viable and provides a level of service into the future? So, when you see the word "master plan," it is an engineering document. It describes the current condition of your system, the level of service you're providing. For example, in water, we're providing a certain amount of PSI, we have enough fire flow, we have enough flow to meet fire demands, we have enough flow to meet all the demands of the system. It also talks about what capital projects will be needed to keep the system in good condition now and into the future, both to provide for your current residents and future residents and businesses. So, that's the purpose of the master plan. And then that flows down to the next item, which is the capital improvement plan, which is a five-year, in Ogden City, it's a five-year plan, I believe it's presented every year, that should flow from your master plan, and it does, I think, in almost every case, in your current CIP. It should flow down to your capital improvement plan. So, what, now we know what projects we may have to put into the ground over the next five years, let's make sure that we have a cost and a time that kind of sucks down everything out of the master plan, which is an extremely thick document, says, okay, let's drill it down to just a couple of main, here are the items we're going to construct, and here's when we're going to construct them, and here's the cost of doing that. And then, this next item is called a comprehensive financial sustainability plan, and it's simply a really cool-sounding term for a utility rate study, and the process that you go to, to evaluate, making sure you have a financial plan in place to, and a way to implement that plan. The information flows from the master plan and the CIP into this comprehensive financial sustainability plan, to make sure that your rates are set such that you have sufficient revenue, and that it's, the tiered structure is fair, and that you have enough revenue to have a viable system into the future. So, this includes, like I said earlier, a multi-year projection of expenses and revenues, utility rates. It talks about debt planning, and this should be updated annually with your budget cycle. That's what our recommendation would be, that every year, you look at, we're going to do a multi-year projection this year, but let's go back and freshen that up every year when you do the budget, to make sure that if costs came down on capital, what does that mean going forward? What decisions do you make as a council based upon that information? And it also includes a public education process, to make sure that the public understands what it is, the council, what information you're using to make the decision to keep a viable system. So, the decision that you're making is made clear to them. What you're wrestling with is made clear to them, so they understand what it means to provide a viable system. There are a few, then, this is a definition of a few of the fiscal health measures, when you look at your system. How do you know it's fiscally sound? These are a few of the measures that are in the industry, both from rating agencies who issue a rating on your debt, as well as AWWA, American Waterworks Association, who provide standards of operating. They say, hey, we look at water systems across the United States, and here are some fiscal measures to see if you have a good system. So, the first one is a measure of liquidity. With that, it doesn't, it's not talking about water, we're talking about liquidity of your cash. Do you have cash reserves, and how much do you have? And it's usually put in terms of days of cash on hand. That's not a very common term, you don't think about that in your own checkbook and say, how many days of cash on hand do I have? But it is a measure that the rating agencies use, and it simply is found by dividing your oper, your net, your net operating expenditures by how much cash you have in the bank, and then expressed in number of days. And the whole purpose of that is to help, it's also referred to in many of the documents as a rate stabilization fund, and the purpose of that definition is so that if there's an unforeseen emergency, or a need to draw upon, a need to draw upon revenue, that you don't have to go right to the rate payer and bump up their rates. You have a cushion to provide for unforeseen incidents. If you could foresee those incidents, you could plan for them, but unfortunately, you can't do that. So, that's one measure of liquidity. And by having 270 to 360 days of cash on hand, investors say, hey, I trust Ogden City, or I trust this utility, that they are planning, and therefore, I trust them with my funds, and I'm going to give them a lower interest rate. Where the opposite is also true, if you have less cash on hand, there's more risk, that you could potentially not be able to respond quickly to a crisis, and would have to immediately go hit your rate payers and raise the rates.
Are the rates really good now, like they're around everywhere else? Are they...
Yes. Municipal rates, we were on the call with Underwriter today, and I think the rates are pretty close to the 10-year low over, interest borrowing rates, if you have a good interest, or a good rating, are pretty much the 10-year low.
How many days do we have in Ogden with cash on hand?
In your various funds, I'd have to look again, I apologize, I don't have it on the tip of my brain, but it's between, some funds have 100, and some have more, as many as 360, depending on the utility fund.
In our last report, you mentioned that we were about 65 days.
I think that may have been true in the water fund, yes.
Water fund?
Yeah. And we'll review after this meeting, we'll review storm water and sewer, which have a better, a better days of, more days of cash on hand.
So, do you combine those numbers to get your 365, or does that have to be 365 just in the water?
It should be per utility, so that there, I mean, the idea, yeah, yes, yeah.
So, the sewer could be higher, but the water would be a little bit lower.
It would be better to have each independent enterprise fund, or each independent utility system have, that it's being self-sufficient. That would be the ideal. The next item is debt coverage. What this refers to is the amount of net revenue. So, after you operate your system, and you have excess revenue at the end of the day, how much do you have available to make your debt service coverage, your debt payments? And a minimum requirement by your bond covenants, when you issue debt, is that you have a dollar and 25 cents for every $1 of debt service that you have to make every year. And if you dip below that, the bondholders will give you a call and urge you to raise your rates. They have the legal authority to bind you to raise your rates. But a best practice is more like $1.50 to $2 of net debt service coverage, which means that you have extra money, which insulates investors against risk. And it also just helps you to make sure you're, again, having cash available in case there's an emergency that comes up. The next item is an asset management plan, sometimes called funding of depreciation. This is simply a way to extend the useful life of your current assets. I think the pictures were painted, you know, said it in a thousand words, or however that expression goes. When you saw that calcium buildup, if you're not putting money into the system to keep it fresh and new, then your assets are going to be shorter, and you have to replace them sooner. So, if you have an asset management plan, or you're at least funding the amount of, that your assets are depreciation, depreciating every year, you have a cash balance to put back into your system and extend the life of those assets, which makes them last longer and is cheaper over the long run. In the current master plan that was done for the water system, there is a de facto asset management plan, where you're replacing a certain amount of distribution lines every year. So, you do have that in the water system.
Cody, just want to ask you a question.
Sure.
So, the fiscal health measures, are those to set up for future bonding, or do those impact the current bond, or both?
They influence, for your current bonds that are outstanding, if you dip below that 1.25 times coverage, you have covenanted as a city to maintain that ratio. So, if you dip below that, yes, it matters, you'll be asked to, asked in a gentle way to raise your rates. But going forward, if you want to, if you need to issue debt, you want to have the highest coverage you can, because it directly translates into lower borrowing costs.
Got it. But, and so the liquidity doesn't impact the current bond, just future bonds?
Yes. Indirectly, I suppose it influences your current bonds, because if you don't have enough money on hand to make your debt payment, but it doesn't directly impact it. Yeah. I don't think any of the bond covenants I've ever seen says you have to have a certain amount of days of cash on hand. Do you, Laura? No, I've never seen that. But it is, it is a good management practice. Then the final item to talk, that I have to talk about is management policies. When you go to the rating agencies, they're very interested to know as, by policy, what does the city do if certain events occur? For example, they want to know, how often are you going to update your master plan? Because they realize if you only update those every 10 to 15 years, they're going to get old and the data gets stale. Are you going to update them every one, two, three, five, 10 years? The more often you update those, the more realistic your capital improvement plan will be, and the more realistic your funding of those capital projects and your rates will be. It also has policies, such as how often will you update your rate study, or your rate analysis will be every, will you review that at budget cycle every year? Maybe, that may be the desire of the city and the council, but is it a written policy that if, for some reason, leadership changes or something occurs, is that going to be continued on to the next council or the next administration? It also includes such things as if some of these fiscal health measures decline below the levels which you state that you want to have, what occurs? Example may be, oh, if we dip below 1.5 times coverage, maybe by policy, you're going to direct the mayor and his staff to come to the council and say, hey, we've dipped below this amount, what would you like us to do? That could be a policy. And it helps investors, and it helps you manage your system proactively, so that you're always on top of any issues that may arise, before they become a crisis. So, those are a few of the key principles of a rate study, and a few of the key definitions of some of the policy considerations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I appreciate no one falling asleep. Makes me feel good.
Thank you, Cody. Any other questions for him? Okay. Thank you. Glenn?
A couple of subjects left, so. Okay, so what I'd like to do now, that we've had all that, is go over the survey results, the survey that was opened up, and go over the schedule for the rest of the rates process. In our efforts to try to get as much feedback as possible from people throughout this process, we developed and opened up this online survey, had a few questions and a place for respondents to give some feedback, or comments, or suggestions. The survey itself was opened up on December 30th, closed just this last Sunday on March 4th. We did have a total of 361 participants, which we thought was a pretty good turnout for an online survey. Of that 361, 254 left written responses. So, we'll just go over a review of the results of each of the questions, and talk about those briefly. Question number one, this was a question where we asked how people felt about the water and sewer utility rates. They were asked to give a rating from very unfair, you can see somewhat unfair, fair, somewhat fair, very fair, or not sure. The combined total for the very unfair and the somewhat unfair was 80%. So, obviously, the vast majority. 10% indicated that they felt the rates were fair, about 4% indicated that they felt the rates were somewhat fair, less than 2% felt they were very fair, and then just under 3% registered a not sure. As far as questions two and three, we put these questions in there mainly to understand who is taking the survey. Question two is about the size of the water meter, and then question three is whether or not the participant had access to secondary water. And the reason we asked these questions is because the billing tier system is different for each of these groups. So, if you're, if you have an either 5/8 or a 3/4 inch connection, you've got one billing tier structure. If you have a one-inch connection, even if you're a residence, residential structure, you've got a different structure. So, we wanted to understand who was, who is taking the survey and what their circumstances were. With question number two, you can see up there, about 64% indicated that they had the smaller connections, the 5/8, 5/8 or 3/4 inch connection. 30% indicated they had a one-inch connection, and then 6.4% indicated they had the larger connection. These larger connections above one inch are almost always associated with the commercial and the industrial user. So, we did, we did get some respondents, some response from them. To relate this to the actual data, or the actual users in the city, the information we got, as far as account from the utility, shows that... we got as far as account from the utility shows that about 90% of the connections in the city are either a 3/4 inch or a 5 eighths inch. So the numbers didn't break evenly, so it looks like we had some more people who had the 1-inch that took the survey than the ratio for the entire city.
How would people know what size water line they have?
Sure, that is actually on the bill and-
Read your bill.
Yeah, and when people got, they were going through this survey, a lot of people got to that question and didn't, didn't know the answer. And so our utility people got a lot of phone calls asking if they could find out what their, what their size was, but it is on the bill. If you look, I actually have a copy here, if you look, it's towards the top of the bill and there are some cells at the top that have different information, different numbers. And right about the middle, the top quarter of the page, there's a line that says MTR size and that's the meter size. And then the number right under that-
Can you show that on the overhead?
I can.
Just so the audience can see what you're talking about.
Bill, can I use your bill? So this right here, you can see the MTR size and then just underneath that is 3/4, that would indicate a 3/4 inch connection. So that's where people can find that on their bill. I think we're good. Any questions about that one?
No, thank you.
Question number three was whether or not the participants had access to secondary water. So you can see the breakdown there, 63% said they did not, about 37% said that they did. And again, as that relates to actual users in the city, the breakdown is about 53% of residential customers do not have access, so a slight majority do not have access, and 47% do have access to secondary water. So those numbers are a little off from the actual ratios as well.
Do we have any idea at all what, how that falls in our city? How many people have culinary and how many don't?
Yeah. The rough numbers that I've jotted down here, there's about 25,000 connections, those without secondary water is just over 13,000 and then those with is just under 12,000. So as I said, that, yeah, that breaks down to 53% do not have secondary water and 47% do have access to secondary water. Okay, so question number four, this was the question where respondents could leave a comment. So the question was, do you believe changes should be implemented to modify these rates? And if so, then they could give comments or suggestions. 86% indicated that they, they felt changes should be made and then the, about 14% didn't feel any changes should be made. With all of the written responses, what we did to summarize those results is we took, of all of the 254 written responses, we counted up how many times a particular comment was made. And certainly there were a lot of comments, but there were some that, that happened quite a bit. And so we tallied those up and we're going to go through the top 10 most frequently written comments included with that question number four. So as a response to that, the most commonly written comment is rates need to be lowered or equalized for those without access to secondary water. And that comment appeared 82 times. Rates aren't affordable, need to be lowered, that appeared 50 times. It's expensive to keep yards green, especially during summer months, that was 48. The fourth most commonly written, rates should be based primarily on consumption or per gallon cost, that was 36 times. Rates are too expensive for smaller households with one to two residents, that was 26 times. Then the bottom five, increasing the rates, the increase in rates has been too steep over the past few years, that was 20 times. Low or fixed income residents are disadvantaged by the current rate structure, 18. Residents are fined if lawns aren't kept green, and that was 18 times. Other cities have lower rates, the suggestion is to look at these as examples, that was 17 times. And then the 10th most frequent comment, all residents should have access to secondary water, and that comment appeared 16 times.
Glenn, can I, can I ask a question that, that I'm, you know, being the new guy on the block here, people ask me why there was in the old, in the rate structure that's currently in place, why there was a difference in the rate structure and why it was seemingly backwards to what it ought to be? Why was the rationale?
I think the, maybe the simplest answer to that, it was, it was to try to compensate for residents who pay the charge for the secondary water. So I think the idea was at the time that that, the first, I think it was 10,000 gallons, they weren't the same, people without or that had secondary water, I think, I think how it went is they paid a little bit less, but that was to try to compensate for that other charge that they had to pay for secondary water. Now, that's, that's certainly something that, that you're going to consider and you're actively considering whether or not that should be the policy, but, but I think that's the explanation for why it was the policy at the time. Any other questions on, on those? Okay. Question number five, this was, what are some of the best ways to involve you in the upcoming water and sewer rates study process? And respondents were, were able to click more than one, which is why that doesn't add up to 100%. Citizen surveys were number one, 72.5%, public hearings, about 45%, town meetings, 36%, focus groups, 24%, open houses, 21%, and then council work sessions, 19%. Just as a note on that, we will be opening up another survey that seemed to be pretty successful, people like to do that and is indicated here, and we'll talk about the timing for that in just a minute. There was actually a sixth question to the survey and this was a question as to whether or not the respondent wanted their email address added to a list that, that could be used to disperse information, media advisories, packets, things like that. We had 232 people sign up for that list and if anybody here didn't get a chance to sign up for that list, they can do so, we've got the signup sheet out in the hall. So if people want to add their email list to that, we'll, we'll be happy to add it to that, that email list. And it looks like a lot of people got, got these sheets as well, but we do have a summary of all this information that we're going over, all this survey data. And just as a note for all of the comments that were received, we, we're still considering this a public input gathering point in the process and so we won't be responding to these tonight, but what we'd like to do is take all these comments, take the comments that we're going to get tonight and incorporate those into, into the study process. And then over the next four to six weeks as we finish up this process, we'd like to respond to as many of those as possible and get information out about, about those concerns and what may be done about those. Are there any other questions about the survey data, the results? Okay. So the last, the last item that we'll go over as far as the presentations is a study schedule. And we'll just start with this particular study, this 2012 study and start with all of the events that have, that have happened so far. November 15th is where we'll start, that's where the council adopted the resolution indicating that they wanted to go through the, the rate study. December 13th, the council reviewed the policy considerations for that 2007 study. That was to give some background and some context so you know how those decisions were made, how the rate structure is set up now and the issues that you're going to have to deal with, with this study. January 23rd, 2012, the internal steering committee is set up and began meeting. This steering committee consists of quite a few representatives from administration, from the council offices, includes representatives from public services, engineering, finance, and the comptroller's office, the legal department, the mayor's office, includes council staff and the city's consultants. So we as a group, we've met twice a week, every week since that first meeting and our plan is to continue to do so through the rest of the process. January 31st, this was where the council reviewed some of the policy considerations for this study. So all the things that I went over at the, at the beginning of the meeting were, were reviewed at that meeting. February 21st, this was the council's first look at the capital improvements plan and the first review of the initial data related to the revenue sufficiency for the water utility fund. I just want to take a minute to talk about what happened at that meeting and what was presented. At that meeting, all of, all of our initial financial data, including all the things that Cody talked about, all the projects that are in all of the plans, all of this was taken and put into a model. And from that model, again, this is all initial data, the first, first numbers that we have, it was all put into this. And from that, three scenarios came out of that for moving forward. These are just example scenarios to show what the impact of those numbers are and how that, that model actually works. The first scenario that was presented was what you might call a no action alternative or the no action scenario. That was trying to fit all these things into current revenue patterns and structures. The second scenario would be considered the cash only option and this would be like trying to save up to pay for everything. So the result of, of that scenario two was a pretty significant rate hike because for the first couple of years, to, to get all the money together to pay for all those things and then rates in that scenario would go, would go back down after a few years. The third scenario was a combination of some increases, so some cash and some bonding. And in this particular model, this was the only one that included the bond, the rate increase in this model was, was much more modest than in scenario two. But these were, these were intended just to show again how this model worked, what these numbers meant in terms of current rates and current revenue as a starting place so you as a council could, could go through all of those considerations and change those numbers accordingly. So this is before you've, you've been through prioritizing the projects in the CIP and in the master plans. This is initial reviews of, you know, what's, what's suggested for coverage ratios and cash on hand and things like that. So these were all the initial numbers and, and as you go through the process, you'll be refining those. So I think it's important to note that not any of those scenarios are anything that the consultants are recommending, that the, the steering committee is recommending at this point. These were, these were just initial numbers for you to take a look at to get to know how the process worked. Any questions on, on that particular issue? February 28th, the council reviewed the CAFRA and the financial audit, this was just last week. And then March 4th, the, the online survey closed, that was just this last Sunday. Okay. March 6th, of course, we'll, we'll go from here on tonight, the fact finding work session, public input, and then again later on tonight, the revenue sufficiency review for the sewer and storm sewer utilities. Next week, this will be your first full review of the culinary water and the storm sewer master plans and you will continue to, to review the CIP. March 20th, that's the Tuesday, two weeks from now, the council will review again further the CIP. March 21st, this is a meeting that's on a Wednesday and this is a meeting for the council to discuss the, the policy issues that are related to the rate structure itself. So these are kind of the, the part two of the policy considerations that I laid out at the beginning of the meeting. This meeting won't be held here in this building, it'll be held at the theaters, the Megaplex Theaters in the Junction. There was a bit of a schedule conflict that night, plus that's, we felt was a good, good facility to, to have that discussion. So anybody who wants to attend that meeting to talk about those or to hear those talked about, that's Wednesday, March 21st, and it will be at the Megaplex Theaters and not, not in this building. March 27th, the council will finalize the review of the CIP. And then April 5th is another pretty significant meeting, that's going to be a town meeting style, so something similar to this. This is where we will be presenting the steering committee's recommendation for the utility rates. And we will have public input at that meeting as well. On, that's a Thursday, March 5th, or, I'm sorry, April 5th is a Thursday and that's when that meeting will take place. April 9th, the following Monday, the second online survey will be open to gather more feedback about that, that recommendation. March 10th will be when the council sets the public hearing, this won't be the public hearing, this is when, when you had set it. And that's for the rates ordinance itself and the CIP. On April 20th, that second online survey will close. And then on April 24th, as we've planned it here, that's when you would hold the public hearing for the utility rates ordinance and the capital improvements plan. And you'll be accepting public input for the water and the storm water master plans. And then finally, if all of those get approved and all of those are in place, June 1st would be implementation date for any new rates or any new rate structures. So that's all I have. Do you have questions for me?
Just quickly, April 5th, the town meeting, what location?
That will be here, yeah, in this building, in this room. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, we'd like to remind everyone, this is a fact finding, public meeting, so we're here tonight to get your input and to identify what questions you have for our future discussion. And so we'd like to open this up for public input. So as you come up, please state your name and try to be precise with your questions and not be too repetitive and, and we'll take that input.
My name is Dan Schroder, I live at 1444 Benford Street and tonight I am not here recommending, representing any organization, I'm speaking only for myself. And I'd like to thank Amy Sue for putting my four slides on here so everyone can see So this is a fact finding session and I have only three minutes to present as many facts as possible. First fact is, as I think you all know, I did a little informal survey, I picked seven other cities, looked up their utility rates. I tried to be as fair as I could about choosing the other seven and guess what, Ogden's rates were higher for both water and sewer than any of these other seven cities, which I think are fairly comparable. I've since learned there are a few other places, Park City and some places in South Salt Lake County that do charge more than Ogden, but Ogden's rates are very much on the high side already. This graph is for a small household that uses a rather small but typical amount of water. The next graph is for a larger household that's on the high side for their indoor water use. And if you look at the report I sent you a few weeks ago, there's a similar graph for people who use water outdoors as well. This is a graph that a couple of you have seen before. I went through all the annual financial reports going back to 2003, which is as far back as we have this kind of detailed information in those reports, and looked at the revenue, the top of this graph, the top of the green is the revenue of the water fund each year. And you can see how it sharply went up after 2007 because of the rate increase from about $9 million before the rate increased to over $15 million for fiscal 2011, it'll be over $16 million for fiscal 2012. So a pretty big rate increase. And then this breaks down where the money went, breaking down all the operating expenses. And you can see that most of the operating expenses were pretty flat over this time, but after the rate increase, there were three that increased a lot. One is what's called contracted agreements, which actually was only a quarter million dollars in 2003 and it's now 10 times that. The other is fiscal charges, that's a tax that the general fund levies on the water fund and on the sewer fund and on the refuse fund, a 17% tax. So when the revenue went up, that automatically went up. And the third is interest. Those are the three things that I would ask the council to take a very careful look at just to highlight the growth in those expenses. So here the pie represents just the increases, not the total amount, but just the increases from 2007 before the rate increased to 2011. And so, and there's, that's about $6 million total in the pie of additional revenue, but less than a quarter of that additional revenue actually went toward the capital projects. The rest went toward interest on the bonds, increased fiscal charges, and an increase in the number of contract agreements. So what bothers me, I guess, is that the additional water I'm paying on my water bill is mostly going to other things besides the capital projects. I don't mind paying for the capital projects, at least within reason, but it bothers me that most of the additional money I'm paying is not being spent on those capital projects. I think I'm probably about out of time, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schroder.
Hello, my name is Christine Nefsey, I live at 26 and Brinker in- I live at 26 and Brinker in Ogden. I'd actually like to start with a question. Who did the initial water study that resulted in the rate increase in 2007? What was that company?
We can get to that, and, you know, if you want to go to your other things, we'll get that question answered for you.
It wasn't the same company that?
Yes.
It was the same company. So, I guess then, my first question is, why would we hire the same company that resulted in such a disparity between rates to do another study?
For right now, you know, with full respect, we want to get your comments, and then we'll address the questions after.
I guess that is my comment. I think that hiring the same company to do, to give us information and make recommendations that resulted in such a disparity between water rates between people who have culinary water and people don't have culinary water was probably a mistake. They messed it up the first time, and I'm not sure I trust them to do it right the second time. So, that would be my, really, my main comment, I guess. My second thing is, we seem like, well, you seem like there are a lot of meetings scheduled to make a determination about this. I think the results of your initial study have pretty clearly stated that the vast majority of residents in Ogden think that this is unfair and that changes need to be made. So, I am also unclear why we're having so many meetings about trying to decide whether this is the right thing to do. And I can tell you, I'm a hospital administrator, I have a lot of meetings, you guys are having way more meetings. So, I think that, you know, you sent out the rate, the statement has been made, 80-plus percent of people think that rates need to be changed, and that this is an unfair system, and yet, we're going to continue to meet on it for several more months before determination is made. I think you guys know what the right thing is to do, and I would invite that you move quickly and do the thing that you should be, you should have done, what, five years ago? You should have done last year when it was brought up initially. The information is out there, and I would invite you to do the right thing now, not wait until June. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Thompson, 1506 24th Street. Questions, I guess? I heard you'll answer these for me later, so I'll just ask the questions. First of all, the percentage of bills being paid per month, is that amount covering the cost of the services that we're being billed for on the utility bill right now? Under, over, exactly the amount we're using? The amount collected, oh, sorry, already asked that. The difference I'm interested in is why the difference between the secondary costs, and specifically, if I have secondary water, which I do, does that mean I'm getting a lower rate or a higher rate than the person that does not have secondary water access? Third, I want to know if I understood correctly, I think Glenn was the one that mentioned that, that based on the size of your water meter, as well as if you have secondary water or not, that also affects the rates? Both those things or just one of them? Does that affect the rate of my water charges? And along with that, the fourth question is, is that by reading the water bill, can I tell from that what my rate is? I'd like to find that. And I guess my last but most important or primary comment would be tonight. I only saw once about Weber Basin Water listed on one of the first slides. When I brought this project up, I guess, last November or so, I had the complaint about unfair taxation and water charges based on my property tax bill where it listed Ogden City Weber Basin Water. I hope I don't have to explain that, but if you want me to, I'd be happy to do that again. I have not heard that mentioned tonight. That was one of the comments I also did make on the survey, and I want to be sure that that is going to be considered in regard to this rate study. That's all I have, unless anybody has a question for me. And thank you for having this work session tonight.
Council members, my name is Scott Handy. I live at 1791 28th Street. And Mr. Schroeder actually presented the exact same things I wanted to talk about, except one item. But on his charts, he is right, we are the highest. And I compared my rates with Clearfield City, Leighton City, Clinton City, Royce City. And my fluctuations, I did a 70,000 gallon example, because that was one of my high watering months last year. And my percentages went from anywhere from 55% higher in Ogden to 67% higher to Royce City, was that much lower than Ogden City. It's interesting, in Royce City and Clinton, they require secondary water only for outside use. In other words, they provide that to new home development and also the existing home developments, which we seem to have lacked in Ogden City, especially where I live. My western boundary is the Pineview Canal, so I pay as much in one month to water my yard as the person west of me pays in one year on his property taxes, $154, it says Pineview Assessment. So, in one month, I use as much exhaust his fund easily. And it's kind of frustrating when I come home from work and he's watering his yard every day, and I'm really, really trying to conserve my water usage. But one thing I wanted to bring up that Mr. Schroeder didn't mention, in my research, I contacted the Bonavista Water Department. I'm not sure how many of you are aware of that water department, but they service Harrisville, Far West, Marriott Sladeville, Plain City, West Haven, and portions of Pleasant View. Bonavista Water Department buys their excess, all of our excess water from Ogden City to provide for these residences. So, here's my question. If I live in Bonavista and I buy water from Ogden City, my water bill there is 34% lower for them than it is for me living in Ogden. And so, that doesn't make much sense to me, because if we're going to sell excess water as to a municipality, why don't we charge more to compensate for some of our expenses in Ogden City? I'm all about expanding secondary water usage in Ogden City. In fact, if I had the opportunity to hook into Pineview at whatever cost, I would do that, and I think that needs to be made available. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Handy?
My name is Frank Kubat. I have a small office building up here in Ogden. I've had property in Ogden over many years, rentals. A lot of what I heard tonight is a utopian world where everything is perfect, a rich city that can do all these things with water and the sewer system. 50% of the people in this country, where I'm told, don't pay income taxes. That means we got at least half the people here that are poor. And I've been in other places in the world where there is no money. In the Ukraine, they get water two hours in the morning, two at night, because the income is $150 a month. Pretty bad situation. Now, that's, we're all well off compared to a lot of countries. But I have a small building up that have about 25% occupancy. If you look around Ogden in the commercial area, if you drove around Harrison, most people are about 50% occupied or less. We're hurting. And a lot of these bills just come out of nowhere. One day, open the bill, and I have a $50-some dollar charge for storm sewer. No warning, no notice, I'm paying $50 more. The water rates went up. No warning, no meetings on why it's going up. Just lately, it went up, the storm sewer went up another $8. Why? Where's this money going? I have no idea where it's going. We're cleaning up the river with that money? How far are we going to go with it? We're already out to I-15. This is getting kind of wild. EPA requiring all kinds of things? Yes and no? The water that goes out from our storm water, most of it goes out into the bay where there's a lot of plant life, and it's absorbing all these chemicals and nutrients. What goes into Salt Lake, I think, is pretty clean by the time it's done. The carp out there are 20-pounders, they seem to be living in it, it's not hurting them, and they're a bottom feeder. So, I have a, I manage a small industrial park up here in the Weber Industrial Park. I have Bonavista Water. I have, there's probably 50 employees there, where at my office building, there's five. We use 3,000 gallons of water, and I pay, my whole bill totals $138 a month for that office building. Up in the industrial park, we've got about 60,000 square feet of space, 50 employees, my water bill's $40. Water and sewer. Now, just lately, they taxed on Weber sewer, we had Ogden for Weber sewer, and then on my property taxes, I pay about another $900 into the sewer system, that's another 75 a month that comes out of my taxes. It's a lot of money, and we don't have it. There's a lot of businesses that are starting to hurt, and we just can't continue to absorb those kinds of costs, especially with the number of people we have. And, you know, someone mentioned that charges by what we use, 3,000 gallons is nothing for an office building, and yet, I'm paying a heck of a price for it. Between the sewer and water, that's crazy, paying, you know, $100. Storm water, I think we're charged by how much square footage of roof we have and how much asphalt we have. Most of my water goes in the ground. I have two rain gutters that drop water into the sewer system, that's it. And yet, I'm charged this tremendous fee, $50-some dollars for storm drain, that's crazy. $5, $10 a month, I wouldn't mind, that's, that I'd say, that's reasonable, but you don't have a treatment plant that treats this water. What's done to it? I haven't seen any kind of facility that handles storm water, have you? No. Where is this plant that, if it went into something like the Weber sewer district, I'd say, okay, well, you got employees out there, you have machinery running, but this water just running freely out to the lake? And how pure do you want it to be in the lake? Not a very good lake to start with, kind of walked around, it's pretty disgusting, and it's not caused by sewer water. Now, we're lucky here, our water here is rather pristine, our drinking water. Now, if you lived in Philadelphia where you have to depend on 50 people upstream flushing their toilets so you have water, that's a whole different story. I could see where they have a nutrient problem and all that. So, some of the EPA requirements, I think, are just a little bit overboard for a place like this.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for having the meeting. My name is Matt Proudfit. I live at 2674 Foothill Drive in Ogden. I kind of started the mess of the revolt against the water rates a few years ago when I got my first bill for $770 for my little third acre house. I've got multi-thousand-dollar expensive sprinkler system that monitors evapotranspiration and talks to satellites and figures out how much water I need and adjusts the watering rate every day. I've done everything I can to save water, and I still have water bills that are in the $300 and $400 range. It's crazy. To come back to some of the things that Mr. Handy talked about, I really have a heartburn with us subsidizing. These are the communities that are fraction, they get their water at a fraction of what it costs me. And essentially, if you look at the communities that are north of 12th Street and west of Harrisville Road, which is basically what he talked about, they have, they just barely had their first rate increase in 10 years. They had that this year. And they still pay about 60% of what I have to pay, and yet, it's coming out of our system. So, I appreciate the capital improvement, I appreciate all the neat things that we want to do, but why soak the residents so we can give it away at a discount to other communities? That just doesn't make sense to me. They should, you know, if we're going to be fair, let's make it fair. Over the years, I've had some friends that are, well, have worked for the city, have been elected officials and whatnot, and one of the things that I've heard, and I don't know if it's still happening or not, but oftentimes, the funds from the water funds are diverted to be used for things that are non-water projects. I think the council needs to get involved and approve those expenditures. You know, I understand, usually, the water department is flush, I'm sorry, that's not an intended pun, usually has a good, is usually a good source of revenue and has funds available, and so, they seem to get tapped. And that's one of the reasons that our infrastructure has not necessarily been kept up where it could have been over the years, because the money's been used in other places. I think that should stop. I saw some pictures earlier of the wall at the water filter plant that needs to be, that's out of alignment or whatever. I have an engineering background, as far as I'm concerned, you've got a civil engineer out there that's got some liability, and they have liability insurance for that kind of stuff. Why should the Ogden City water users be paid, or paying to fix this thing after we paid somebody else to engineer it properly in the first place? I have the same feeling, and I don't have all the details, but I have the same feeling about that oval pipe we saw on the road. There's an engineer out there who, as far as I'm concerned, didn't do his job, and now we're paying for it twice. That adds up in a hurry. It's neat when you've got an unlimited pot of money, but that's not really what this is. You know, this is money out of our pockets that are paying for this. I think there's, well, there's better ways of doing this, you know, decent engineering, and I understand things are tough sometimes, and so, we have to cut corners and maybe put in a pipe that's not as structurally sound as we would have liked to. Okay, that's one thing. But I think with using qualified engineers, maybe we could save ourselves some money down the road. I've heard some talk about conservation, and I'm happy to conserve. I don't want to waste one drop of water. I really don't. But I also don't want to see a rate structure that's trying to force us to conserve when, one, we're not saving it. I'd feel better if there's a giant reservoir somewhere, and everything we conserve is going in that reservoir for a rainy day, but it's not. Any water we use is sold to somebody else or sent out in the Ogden River. So, conservation plans need to be there when we're in a drought time and we really need to pull back. But when we got water, we're making people pay conservation rates so we can send it down the Ogden River. It doesn't make sense to me. I think we need to look at that and say, okay, here's one rate structure we can pull in when we need to, when it's predicted to be a drought year, and here's another structure when, you know what, we've got all kinds of water. We're just diverting it in the river. So, why soak the people for the extra funds? One other thing, I've heard a lot of, a lot of the terms secondary water thrown around. One of the things I've learned from my investigations with the city is Ogden City considers anyone with two water meters to have secondary water. Me, I consider secondary water someone who has culinary water connected to Ogden City and Pineview, okay? There's a lot of people over the years, because the city taxed on extra fees to the water meters for sewer and whatever, they put in two meters, one for the house and one just to water the lawn. And they get a bit of a discount, and they don't have to pay sewer fees on that, but Ogden City considers them to now have secondary water. And in what, in where you're looking at who has secondary, who doesn't, I don't really consider that secondary water, it's still coming out of Ogden City pipe. They might be paying a little bit different rate structure, but I think you need to either, you need to reclassify those, you know, and take a look at the people who have essentially unlimited water for one bill that they pay in the summer, or in their, with their, with their property tax, like most Pineview users have, and then another situation where, you know, we're paying for whatever's metered. Does that make sense, I hope? And appreciate your help, lower my bill, I need the money more than you do. Thanks.
We're not getting it, by the way.
I live at 644 North Monroe Boulevard. One of my observations is that when you're talking water and sewer combinations, if it's anything like my mom, who lives in the Midwest, they're charged for how much water is going out as well as coming in, and that- And that seems to me as a revenue increase. I'm not sure how that's to work. Again, the only other thing that I comment on is I agree that conservation is a major factor. But I do not know how to conserve any more than I am without literally taking out all the grass or cutting the trees down or whatever I have to do. But, you know, and I don't plan to do that, but because the minute you do that, then you deal with city coating and everything else. So these are just two observations that I've noticed, and I'm not sure how to address them. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Tim Ackerman. I have a rental property throughout Ogden. I like to keep it up. I like to keep the grass green and everything. But lately, it's been so hard because the cost of it, the cost of water to keep the lawns green. I keep, I'm putting sprinkler systems in to try to reduce it, you know, and I keep it at a minimum. And I actually almost have, still have the grass burning just to keep the cost of the water down. I keep having to increase to the renters the cost. I try to incur some of it, but it's just getting to the point where I don't know what to do. Either you go in, dump sand on the grass, and just say to heck with it because the cost of it. I get one renter goes out there, actually leaves the water on maybe a little too long, wow. And the month here comes a big bill. And it's really hurting you because you all know, you don't, you don't make that much on the rental. They incur some of these bills you're getting if they do. I get after them, we work on it, but it's just, even with the sprinkler system and that, it's just hard to keep that grass green and keep it looking good like I used to. So I'd like to see the rates adjusted to my properties that don't have the secondary water, to be able to keep things, you know, looking good and do my best to keep the water usage down. But we just need a break. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Further comments? So I do want to thank you for sharing your information with us tonight. We truly do value the information that you've provided for us. We will work on getting some of these questions answered. We also want to encourage, you know, more citizens to look at their rate survey that's coming up and just give us feedback. And we will look forward to hearing more in some of the future meetings. I do respect Dr. Neffsy's information, and we'll look at that seriously and look at Dan Schroder's information and, you know, really all of the stuff that was presented to us tonight. More comments from council? Mr. Cook?
Just encourage additional participation in the meetings that are upcoming. I mean, the idea is to provide all the input you need in order to make informed decisions and to be fair. That's the idea. It's going to be difficult, I think, for you to balance all of the issues that are for you. I think we're then concluded with our fact-finding.
I was just going to mention that. So thank you. This will conclude the public input, but we'll now move into our, we'll take a short break, and then we'll move into Room CR 310 for further information and work study. Thank you.